And all the praise, we ask all these things in Christ's name and everyone said, "Amen."
Amen.
Do you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Here.
Jimenez?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
First Day?
Here.
Walling?
Here.
Yates?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, moving on in the agenda, after the roll call, there's the opportunity for community comments. This item is reserved to receive comments from the community for concerns whether or not they're on the current agenda. The community is encouraged to come and speak before the mayor and city council, asked to keep statements brief. Time shall be limited to no more than three minutes. Any questions are to be asked to the city staff, council members, or the mayor prior to speaking to the full council, so that way concerns can be properly researched and perhaps answered away from the meeting. Comments are to be directed to the mayor and city council only. From time to time, people will ask me, "What's the difference between speaking at the beginning of the meeting versus if there's a hearing? Why, you know, which one should I speak at?" The difference is, before the meeting starts, there's a three-minute time period on that. So if you want to talk to the full council, you can do that and be on your way. If you want to wait until the hearing, there is no particular time limit, and so, from that perspective, you can be more in-depth. And so with that in mind, is there anyone who would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll move on. Item number five is the consent agenda. These are all items that are routine in nature and no discussion is anticipated by the folks that are putting together the agenda. I would draw your attention to item H, where there's approval of a pay request for $64,000 and some change to Norris Asphalt Paving for their work on South 11th. And then there's also included a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute the necessary documents for the purpose of retaining private mowing and trimming services for the city facilities and properties. Do we have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Okay.
Any discussion?
I'd like to pull item J.
That's the one having to do with the mowing.
The mowing. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, let's do a roll call vote on items A through I.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Tom, what's up?
I just wanted that to be read instead of leaving it in the consent agenda.
Okay.
I can go into detail an hour later, whatever you want, Mayor.
What did I ever do to you?
Huh?
Okay.
Let me reiterate.
I'm still getting to it.
Okay.
Okay. Item J. This item is a request from city staff to execute a two-year extension for services with Four Seasons Yard Care for the purpose of providing mowing and trimming services at select city facilities. Contractors performed services to expectations and within cost estimates for the fiscal 2015 budget. Four Seasons Yard Care was originally selected to provide mowing and trimming services as the low bidder through a formal request for proposal process back in March of 2014. The contractor and city staff have discussed an extension of the existing contract with the adjustment of $100 per mow added to the overall cost, specifically on the Vanderwill location. So the listing of the locations and costs, Edmondson Park, $1,000 per mowing, Vanderwill Park is $170 per mow, playgrounds on C Avenue East is $35, playground on C Avenue West is $30, and playground on South I Street, $25 per mow. So the total for all locations is $1,260 per mow. So do we have a motion supporting this?
One second.
Any discussion?
The reason I had it pulled, back when we did this last year, after the fact, typically, I got some calls. Century Lawn called me, and, to be honest, when I talked to the owner of Century Lawn, I told him, I said, "I don't look at this as a fact that the company was from out of town, because whatever's best for the city, we're doing, and we got the best price." The only reason I'm talking about it again this time, since we didn't advertise it last year as that this would be an opportunity, that this contract may be extended, like we're going to do, I thought maybe it was more prudent that we rebid at this time, saying, "This could be an extended contract with the successful bidder for X amount of years." I know, I'm not...
Did you say that initially, on the first bid, that it could be extended?
I don't think we had any, I don't recall there any language in there that talked about an extension, but it's not required by code. It was just something that, the first time around, I thought we'd do that. And that's, we did get the low bid, and Four Seasons was significantly lower than any of the other bidders, and so they performed well. The increase is minimal, as far as a $100 increase for two years. So I felt comfortable moving that forward and bringing it to you, but there was no specific term extension in the contract with them.
So you don't think it would pay to rebid it with a two-year contract rather than a single-year contract, that we could maybe get a better bid from, say, Century or one of the other local companies?
I think now that they know what...
That's the tough part.
Now that they know what Four Seasons would like to do, I question that. Four Seasons was, the last time around, was $1,160 for all locations, and the next closest was $1,578.25. Century, as an example, was $1,860 per mow. So do I think we could've got a better bid? I don't necessarily, I guess they could've stayed close to where they are, but I thought it was a pretty good deal for what they were providing. So I didn't rebid it. And we don't have a local vendor preference. Some communities have a policy that say...
And that's what Mike and I talked today. That's what causes that rub. Pella does business that way and we don't. I mean, you know, but that's, the two cities differing.
Yeah, it's a 5% of the bid or up to $2,500.
What is...
The Pella preference for the local.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, that's a very clear...
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any further conversation? Roll call, please.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
No.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on.
Thanks, Mayor.
Item number six, this is announcement of vacancies that we have at the various boards and commissions. First is the Airport Commission, one vacancy to fill upon appointment for an unexpired term ending on December 31st of 2015. This is a five-member board, typically meeting on the first Monday of the month. Currently, we have four males serving and one vacancy. The Building Code Board of Appeals, two vacancies to fill. This is upon appointment to serve at the pleasure of the mayor. It's a five-member board that meets as needed. Currently, we have three males serving and two vacancies. The Board of Adjustment, three vacancies, one to fill upon the appointment of an unexpired term ending on April 30th of 2017, and two to fill to serve five-year terms that end on December 31st of 2019. It's a five-member board that meets as needed. Currently, we have four males serving with one vacancy. Historic Preservation Commission, we have two vacancies to fill, three-year terms. They end on December 31st of 2017. It's a seven-member board that meets as needed. Currently, there are six females and one male serving. Housing Trust Fund Committee, one at-large member to serve a three-year term ending on January 31st of 2018. There are five at-large members on the committee that typically meets every other month. Currently, we have three females and two males serving at-large. And then finally, the Mahaska County Solid Waste Management Commission and Ad-Hoc Recycling Committee, five vacancies to fill that serve one-year terms from January 1, 2015, through December 31st of 2015. Two members of the commission also serve on the Ad-Hoc Recycling Committee, and this is a five-member board that typically meets once a month. Three males and one female currently serving, and we do have one vacancy. Getting into the main agenda, number seven, A, this is to consider a motion to receive and file the audit report and authorize payment of $8,750 to Martinson Company, CPA LLP, and $625 to the Auditor of State. Martinson Company performed our audit for last year. We have a copy of the audit report. Staff is recommending receiving and filing the report. Let's see, is there anyone from Martinson Company here tonight? Yes, sir, would you please?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. My name is Richard Attaberry, CPA with Martinson Company, CPA firm out of West Des Moines, Iowa, and as stated, we were engaged to perform the audit on your city for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014. I want to thank all the staff, Michael, Amy, Pamela, and everybody who assisted us with preparing, doing our work as far as conducting the audit. Everyone was very helpful, very cooperative in the performance of the audit, and got us anything that we asked for in terms of documentation and records and whatever, was always very good and available for us. The report that you probably all should have received is pretty similar to the reports we presented to you in the prior years. No significant differences in terms of how the reports laid out or things along that line. It's kind of composed in sections. The primary, as far as the opinion reports, on page five and six and seven, it discusses what type of opinion that we put on the report, and that opinion is what we refer to as an unmodified opinion, which basically means we haven't modified the opinion for things that are wrong or aren't presented properly or along that line. So it's considered what they call an unmodified opinion, which is the good opinion that you want to receive. Following that is the Management's Discussion and Analysis section, which is kind of a recap of what's happened with the city during the year, what's changed in terms of what's been up, what's been down. So it's a really good, good section to, if you want to get a quick review of what happened in terms of the finances of the city during the last year, those, without having to read through all the schedules and all the other parts of the report, that gives you a pretty good summary of what transpired last year for the city. And then behind that are the initial primary financial statements for the city, pages 16 through 22, which list the activities of the different funds that the city has and categorized in different ways on some of the different schedules. All that's in accordance with the accounting standards that are prescribed on how the governmental entities are supposed to present their financial statements. Behind that are what we call notes to the financial statements, which is the narrative, explanation, and more detailed information about different aspects of the city, gets into a little more description of what your debt obligations are and some other obligations and commitments that the city has along that line. And behind that is the comparison to the budget for the year, and then some supplemental schedules in the back that provide more detail as far as some of the smaller funds of the city that, the bigger funds are kind of brought to the front of the report. I put more emphasis on the larger funds of the city that where more of the dollars flow through. Schedules in the back kind of list all the different funds, but some of those don't have a lot of activity in them, so they're kind of put in the back, not highlighted as much. Then we have some schedules on what the debt of the city is and how it's changed from last year to the end of this fiscal year, as well as the listing of the debt that you're going to be required to pay in future years, kind of scheduling it out, and then also some comparisons to some prior years. So I mean, that's just kind of the brief order of the report. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of information there. I'll just kind of highlight some things of the city. Once again, the report is presented on the cash basis of accounting, which is the way it's been done for a number of years and the way the majority of the cities of your size in the state of Iowa generally present their financial statements that way. It's a little bit simpler method of reporting the finances and matches up with your budget well as far as reporting it that way. Once again, you didn't have enough federal funding involved this year to require a single audit, which you've had at some years in the past, which required some additional work, which we didn't have to worry about this year. No new findings of any problems this year, whatever. We still have the recurring one with the segregation of duties, which is always probably going to be there for a city of this size. It's pretty typical. You're going to find that mentioned in most every report of a city of this size. Overall, the cash balances of the city are up slightly, not a bunch, but at least they were, did increase just by 0.2%, so essentially, you had enough receipts came in that covered the disbursements that were paid. Receipts did increase during the year, a little over 7%, kind of attributed to a variety of different things. There wasn't any one particular thing that kind of stood out. Property tax increased a little bit from property valuations primarily. Your levy rate was up a little bit, but very, very small. You had a little bit of increased monies you received under the reimbursement back from the schools on the local option sales tax, where you'd give some money to the school district, and then they've turned around and give money back to the city, and that went up some this year. And then you also had a state contract dealing with some sewer work that the state wanted done out here that was something different this year that caused your total receipts to be up. But disbursements were also up a little, almost 6%, and most of that increase, again, came from some of the capital project work done with that sewer reimbursement contract you got from the state, plus some other sewer work that you were doing this last year. And then the fire department had some additional expenditures, a little more equipment and some architectural work that was started on that caused some of your disbursements to be up. Debt load on the, for the city continues to be improved, and your debt load is lower just by continuing to make your payments on the debt, and you haven't acquired any new debt over the last year. So the debt load actually fell by 16% during the last year, which is good, makes the, helps keep the city healthy financially-wise anyhow. Overall, it looks like the city's doing well financially, you're staying healthy. You've got a sufficient balance in your general fund to be able to meet your obligations when they, when it's needed to be able to pay the bills and enough reserve that you're not in any kind of jeopardy in the short run or anything on that. So I think it was a good report. I think that things have gone well financially for the city, and they're doing well. So that's all I really have to report about. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer anything that you might...
Remember, last time, we had the same significant deficiencies that we did before and just for the public's sake. For us to fix that significant deficiency would be the way to do that. Would we literally have to hire somebody else to take those cash receipts?
Yeah, you'd at least have to hire at least one other person. You know, the segregation duties deal has to deal with the fact that you don't want to, can't have, or want to have more than one person that can have potential control over whether it's receiving the cash, recording what was received, and then somebody else obviously reviewing it, and also on the disbursement side of things, that somebody, you know, initials the, something for payment, somebody else writes the check, and somebody else approves it, and neither one of them can all be the same person at any one time. And then you also have to deal the same thing with the payroll type of issue. So it's, it's very, it's, it's very difficult, you know, really, I mean, you've got decent controls for what you, segregation for what you have, but ideally, an ideal situation is that you're big enough that you've got departments that no one person can handle a transaction from start to end, and with the size of your city clerk's office and the fact that people are either gone for being ill or on vacation or whatever, that somebody else has got to, there's just not enough people to have an ideal segregation to make that happen. It's...
Any other comments or questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
See, at this point, we still need a motion to receive and file the audit report, also authorizing the payment to Martinson Company and payment to the Auditor of State. Do we have a motion for that?
No move.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call, please.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ben Zetton?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on to item B. This is a public hearing. Consider a resolution levying a special assessment against private property for cutting and removal of weeds by the city of Oskaloosa in accordance with Title 8, Chapter 8.20 of the City Code, City of Oskaloosa. This is the time for the public hearing on levying that special assessment against private property for weed cutting. In Exhibit A, we show three properties. A written objection was received from Randy and Joanne Plate, and that's included in our agenda packet. Certified notices were sent to each property owner. The notice was published in the Oskaloosa Herald. If approved, the property owner will have 30 days to pay for the weed cutting at the city clerk's office, and after 30 days, it will be assessed to their property taxes. Payment schedule, one year, 9% interest. So I'll open the public hearing at this time, if anyone would care to comment on this. Please come to the microphone.
I'm Joanne Plate, and my husband Randy is right here. And we have a property at 802 D Avenue West, and, oh, it's 411 North G. We own the property at 802, and then the vacant lot at 411 North G. And we have a, we had a girl that mowed it for us, and we were at the state fair, and she checked it on the 9th and said that it wasn't too tall yet. So when we got back from the fair, I had the bill in the mail that the city had mowed it, and they had mowed it, but I don't feel that it was, I think it's supposed to be 12 inches tall or something before they mow it. We've never missed paying our taxes. Our taxes are paid on time ever since we've owned the property, which has probably been 20 years, maybe. And I just feel like $250 is more than it, than it should be. I don't...
I think they send us something too that said you had pictures of it. I guess from the last time it was mowed to when they said it was mowed, I realize we got a lot of rain this year, but I can't hardly believe that in the 10 or 12 days that it could grow that much.
Do you have pictures anywhere?
Yeah.
Yeah, I do have pictures here. I got them from the Public Works Department today, and there's a gentleman here, he holds a yardstick up, and there's a little black mark on it, and that black mark, they mark it every foot. So do you want to take a...
And there's a slab of concrete there. When we bought the property...
And then after is attached to it, excuse me?
When we bought the property, there was a vacant house on it, and the grass was always tall. I mean, it was a disaster. And then we bought it, and out of our own pocket, we tore the house down, and Randy got bonded and everything to do it, and we never had any help from the city. It all came out of our pocket, and there is a slab of concrete there, and there...
I'm going to say this...
Could have been some weeds.
She probably didn't weed eat because she didn't want to get her mower close to the edge of the concrete.
But I did go by there after, like, the day after we got the letter in the mail, and there was a couple of weeds. I don't know what they're called. They look kind of like a cat tail, and they were still standing by that concrete. So if the city, well, I'm sure the city did mow it, but there was still a weed, I mean, few weeds by that piece of concrete that they didn't apparently cut then either. But the whole, the overall yard is not 12 inches.
We have pictures for the council to see.
So this is before, and the after is behind it.
I have a question. How often is your service, does the lady mow the yard? What's the schedule for the mowing?
Every week. She usually mowed it every week.
And so in your, your view, is she only missed a week, maybe with the rain or whatever?
Well, she checked it on the 9th, and when we got home from the fair, like, the 16th or 19th or something, they had mowed it. I'm assuming they mow it on the 15th.
It was one on the 18th.
Okay, so it went from the 9th to the 18th, probably then...
That's our employee, right?
So when was the last time she had mowed it, do you know?
I asked for the question.
I'm going to say it was probably the last week of July, because she checked it, she said she checked it on the 8th.
It was probably the first part of August. It wasn't, I mean, it, she went over and, and checked it, and it, it hadn't, I mean, she had mowed it and then went to check it, and it didn't really need it. She said it wasn't past her ankles, so she didn't mow it. But I, I think it was, I don't know the exact date, but I'm sure it was first part of August.
How does somebody get their lawn cut? Is that based off a complaint?
Yes.
If there's something that's obvious, yeah.
But there was a house right next, right catty-cornered from ours, and you could tell it hadn't been mowed all summer. I mean, the grass was waist-high, and it wasn't mowed when I went by and looked at ours. So if they're, if they're going around checking properties, why didn't that one get mowed then?
You mentioned in your letter that, you know, you think that it was probably complaint triggered, is that right?
There was, I was told there was a complaint, and I can probably tell you who complained. The girl that was renting, that's renting the house, wanted to mow it, and I told her she couldn't because this other girl was mowing it. And I'm just guessing that she probably complained because she wanted to mow it and have that taken off of the rent. Because she did ask the girl that was mowing it what I was paying her to mow it, and that's just my, I'm just assuming.
So the person that went on the 9th felt it was not, it didn't need mowed?
Yes.
Yes.
And then it looked like that on the 18th?
But that, where that guy's standing, there's a concrete slab, there's...
There's actually a concrete slab there, and then there's a drop-off.
Yeah, you can see the concrete slab in the picture, but I mean, that...
There's about a foot drop-off on the, on the other side of that.
And that maybe was taller, because probably they didn't want to get up close to it with the weed eater, maybe, I don't know, but the overall yard is not that long, was not that long.
Is that raised up enough that I could not run a lawnmower over the top of that?
Yes.
Yes.
No expert, it just looks like it would have grown a whole lot in nine days to not even mow it on the 9th or somewhere in between there. Not just in that one spot either. That's, that's the only question I have, is, is your service potentially maybe didn't, maybe didn't do what they needed to do for you?
Yeah. Well, she, like I said, when she went to mow it, or to check on it, she said it was...
It wasn't past her ankle.
Up around her ankle. So she didn't mow it, she was going to wait another week, and I guess...
It did rain that week, but...
How long have you guys owned that? Five?
Probably...
Twenty years, I would guess.
Yeah, probably close to 20 years, maybe not quite 20.
This is the first time this has ever come up for you guys?
What would be your potential solution if we were to waive this? What would be the corrective action to stop this incident from happening again?
The girl that's living there is mowing it now.
She got the job.
She got the job, and she bought a rider, and she's mowing it now. The girl that was mowing it moved to Des Moines, and always before, the girl that was mowing it, mowed it. Randy would load our mower in it and go in and mow it every week. But the girl that is living in the house next to it is mowing it, the rental house is mowing it now. And she's keeping it short, and she's doing a good job, but the one before moved away, so the one that's living there is mowing it now.
Do we have any record of how long it took us to mow it?
It would have been, because of the fee, one hour labor on the Exhibit A.
Right, but I'm assuming --
Do I know if it was 20 minutes?
It's a minimum of one hour, so we don't know whether it took us 10 minutes or not.
How long did it take you to mow it?
Usually, if I go in and mow it, it takes me about, probably 35 minutes. It's, the lot's 60 by 120.
Is that right?
Got a couple of trees on it. You go around, and that slab of concrete, that's, it's pretty much a slab straight.
Charging them $50 for the hour?
I don't even know if we can do that, but I was trying to figure out what would be equitable. I didn't know what was, what our options are. I think if, you know, you're in your first-time offense, you've got some corrective actions, things happening. Is there a motion on the table here?
No, it's an open hearing, so no. And this isn't the time for a motion. I want to see if there's anybody else who wants to speak. Any further questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would care to speak in the open hearing? Okay, so I'll go ahead and close the hearing now. We're ready for a motion.
Do you want to break this separately? You want to do this? Here's what I would do. I would suggest pulling them out from everybody else.
The other two?
Yeah, would this be like the dissent agenda, more or less? Can we pull one?
Sure. I mean, we can do separate motions on this.
All right, so I'd like to pull them out --
Okay.
And do them separate, but then go ahead and move forward with the structure that's already proposed here.
Okay, so you would make the motion for the Thompson and Potter properties, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
As proposed. Do we have a second? Any comments? Roll call.
What are we going to do when they show up?
Can I ask a question?
Was it a violation or not? I mean, that, from a, from an applica, if we're going to apply this rule for everybody going forward, I guess I'm trying to understand, is there something that we did as staff to not enforce it correctly? Obviously, this is why you're elected officials. But I just, I'm concerned about the precedent that it sets if we waive this because they came and spoke at the public hearing.
My only thought on that, at least with this particular case, when I look at that particular picture, I can definitely see a difference, but it certainly looks like the middle of that, what they're talking about, the raised concrete, is definitely higher than everywhere else. So you just pick the small, you know, it doesn't look like it's a whole lot right there, and obviously, it looks like it's probably 24 inches. You just go to the middle and assume that's the case for everything, or? That's for me, you know. When I looked at that picture, it didn't, you know, normally when you see these things, it's pretty cut and dry, like, yeah, it's straight across the board. But there's, we definitely see raised concrete there. You definitely see a case where they couldn't drive over it.
The area where the stick is at, obviously, those are the highest points, and that's kind of the same thing that I'm seeing. The rest of the yard around the grass doesn't appear like that it's 12 inches. Now, if our view is, if ever there's a weed over 12 inches or a set of weeds, then, I don't, I don't think we, there was anything done wrong. That picture shows that area was over 12 inches. There is just some unique with the concrete around there once it's been mowed down, and it didn't look like the whole lot was of that same level to me in that picture. That's the only difference I see, Mike.
I guess going back to probably Mike's point, I'd like to see a couple other pictures, maybe, of him standing around the yard somewhere else that wasn't maybe the high point, maybe where the high and the low, high-low and mid. I know you can't, you know. In that particular case, it's just, it's difficult to see, and I haven't looked at the property personal.
So a motion of the second on enforcement on two right now. Roll call, please.
Walling?
We're voting on the other two?
Yes.
To assess the other two?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
First day?
Yes. That passes. Now, we have a motion on the remaining property.
I would make a motion, charge them $50 per hour and waive the fee this one time.
Second. So you're waiving the entire fee?
No.
No, no.
You're going to charge them 50?
We're going to charge them 50 for the hour, we got into it, but waive the penalty. You know, they made corrective, you know, I don't know. We all know how this goes. You leave for two weeks, and you come back, and, all right, I try to give people the benefit of the doubt in the first time. So, and just from that picture, from what I have here, from what they've presented, it's difficult for me to stick somebody right there with what I have now.
Basically, you want to reduce the fee from $250 to $50?
I just want to charge them 50 bucks. One hour of labor.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Gates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
First day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Moving on, item C. This is to consider an ordinance amendments to Title 17 zoning, Chapter 17.04 definitions and Chapter 17.24, the supplemental site development regulations, City of Oskaloosa zoning ordinance in regards to accessory building standards. Public Works is proposing changes to the zoning ordinance regarding accessory buildings. The existing regulations are outdated and unclear when determining the height of accessory buildings. The present code also does not have a maximum limit on the number of accessory buildings permitted on a property. Proposed ordinance amendments reflect the staff's attempt to address and resolve Oskaloosa's existing zoning regulations. The proposed code updates include, but are not limited to, the following. Number one, to revise the definition for the height of accessory buildings. Number two, set the maximum height limit of 18 feet for detached garages, 12-foot for any other accessory structures like a storage shed. Number three, sets a maximum area of 750 square feet for detached garages, 200 square feet for storage sheds. Number four, sets a maximum of two accessory structures that can be located on a property. Planning and zoning considered this item on their October 13, 2014 meeting, recommended by a vote of 7-0, that the city council approve the ordinance amendments regarding accessory buildings. So I'll open the public hearing at this time. Is there anyone who would care to speak to these zoning changes? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
My name's Joe. Joe Crookham, 815 Woodland. And I didn't come up here about this. I just heard about it just now when you read that off, and I find it interesting because I have several violations out on my property. My barn would violate those rules, and so, and I'm not sure, I guess I would think the buildings I have on my property are appropriate, but this ordinance, as it passed as it is, would make those buildings illegal. And gosh, I don't know if that's a good idea. I mean, obviously, I don't have to tear them down because they're there, but I would hate to think that we get to the place where things like that can't be built on properties where there's room for them. If you had a space ratio and that sort of thing, that might make some sense to limit that. But if the space is available, 12 feet, that's not a very big building. So I think it needs to be thought through a little bit more as to what it's really intended to apply to, because it would seem inappropriate for properties that have, I think of Jeff McNulty's, he just lives just down the street from me, and his buildings would not comply with that. Matter of fact, now Peterson's across the street, theirs wouldn't comply with this rule, but then he's a cyclone fan, so it's okay if you tear his down. I'm a little concerned with building, with that, with that size limitation on buildings if the properties are large enough to accommodate it.
Okay. Thank you.
750 square feet is definitely reasonable.
I've got a building that's illegal, too. And I don't have what Joe's got. I'll guarantee you that. But I've got a garage that would not fit that. And having only two structures on a property?
Public hearing's still open, so you can be asking for the public.
You can ask the mic.
No, I don't want to talk to the mic.
Would anyone else care to speak at this time?
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Yeah, any further comments, Aaron?
No, I said enough.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, too. First of all, obviously, I'm, number one, I did not draft this, although I'm mindful of some of the concerns behind this that I think have resulted in this.
Wait, can I, do we have a motion yet?
No.
So before we get started, do we have a motion?
Do we have a motion to approve? Do we have a motion to deny?
I'll second it.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could speak to that now?
You bet.
Once again, I did not draft this, although I think I'm mindful of some of the concerns behind it. As to the concerns Joe has mentioned, those obviously are good and valid concerns. At the same point in time, it would be my feeling and belief as city attorney that in existing structures would be grandfathered in, so we wouldn't be going out there asking Joe to tear it in his garage, of course. The biggest concern, though, that I've come across, I think, that has kind of resulted in these is the whole, how you figure the peak height for a garage. Keelish is not here, of course, not, which is why I'm speaking to this, but there are, obviously, in certain practices, you have your industry standards and your industry approaches. And to me, as a layperson, when I read the code, if something says 12 feet, I would assume that would mean your gable peak. Well, apparently not in the world of engineering. Apparently, in the world of engineering, you take your average height when you're looking between your peak and how far down your eaves are running. And because of that, we ended up with problems as we were having with Russ Parker's garage when we had that issue out there before, which, quite frankly, as he correctly pointed out, he could have constructed that, so that would have complied if you dragged the eaves completely down. So I think the biggest concern with this actually is to try to avoid that, where you'd have the monster garage on the thing. Some of the other concerns, the number of accessory structures that you have, as Aaron has raised some concern about, you know, ultimately, I think that's a policy issue. I mean, how many, what the council would prefer and desire that a neighborhood may look like. But I think, from my own standpoint, the one that had the greatest concern was that maximum height and changing the definition on that, so you are looking to what, to me, common sense would dictate when you're simply looking to your gable height rather than trying to figure, from an engineering standpoint, some average height. So for what it's worth, those are my comments.
Commercial has a ratio between green space and building, right? Does residential not have that same guideline?
I think it does.
Yeah, I mean, that keeps you from putting too many square foot of building on your property. But I'm asking. I know commercial has it, but I'm not sure about residential.
Yes, but I don't know about the, yeah, there is. I don't recall what the ratio is.
I don't know what it is, but it was one for --
So Section 2G talks to that a little bit, where it says that, we're not going to go over, is it 30% of the ground in the back or something like that? Accessory structures not to exceed 200 square foot in area? Yeah. More than 30% of the rear yard shall not exceed 18 feet in height.
So the 750 is wrong. It depends on the size of the lot. I mean, that was my point.
Mayor, council, a couple of solutions here, at least options for you. We could either have a study session on this and have more in-depth conversation, if you'd like to do that, or you could kick it back to Planning and Zoning Commission for further evaluation. Maybe give them some constructive feedback on maybe what they could look into more. Just a couple of ideas.
There's a pro, I don't know if I can talk about this or not, but one of the properties pictured here, we went into closed session on. Is that what's triggering all this? Can you speak to any of that?
If you're asking me, I don't know, quite frankly.
I mean, it's an example of, but I don't think it's the reason why.
Specific to the question, I mean, could we also have an option for looking at the height? If that's the main driver, and then kick back the rest of it to P&amp;Z to look at maximum coverage or number of buildings or?
I would think that could certainly be done.
I personally don't have any concern with the height. To get that clarified, I do have strong concerns, as already expressed, about size and number of buildings, because it seems like it needs to be some type of ratio with the amount of property you have. Well, I think we get a lot of complaints anyway from the general public, saying we're just so restrictive on anything. We've got more rules and regulations. Nobody wants to go there for that very reason. You see your available time.
Also, is the driveway considered an accessory building? It's detached, yes.
So are we voting it down or sending it back to P&amp;Z?
That's the side. What's the one?
Got a motion.
There's a motion. The motion was to deny it altogether.
Okay.
I suppose it could go back to P&amp;Z, but it would be better to, if the council wants it to go to P&amp;Z, they should express their wishes.
Without talking with them, I'd hate to throw something back to them, kick it back up here and not have any direction, and then us go.
Yeah, that's not fair to them either.
It's not fair to them to waste their time and go in a direction, and quite frankly, there's another issue out there that went to closed session, and I don't know what's driving that or what we can talk about publicly.
So I'm reading that the, the feeling of the council is that it ought to go back to P&amp;Z, not that it should be rejected out of hand. Is that right? And that we can, is there a general agreement on height, or is it not even that?
I was rejecting it flat out. Me, too. I don't know.
I don't even know what to tell, I don't know what to tell P&amp;Z right now. I just, I just don't. Not until I talk with the city attorney.
Okay. Vote is to reject entirely. Roll call, please.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
First day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
That passes. Okay, item D. Public hea, yeah, it's another public hearing. This is the ordinance to vacate and sell 60-foot by 16-foot of the north-south alley adjacent to 1002 North Second Street. This is the first reading. Emily Greenfield, owner of 1002 North Second, requested that the portion of the north-south alley adjacent to her property be vacated. The neighboring property at 701 North Third Street has an existing accessory structure that encroaches into a portion of the public alley. Therefore, the applicant would prefer to purchase their half section of the alley. The applicant wants to purchase the alley for personal investment and property improvement. The city conducted a survey of households with direct access to the alley. Of the residents responded, a total of six. All of them wanted the alley to be vacated. This portion of the alley contains century-linked utility infrastructure, and so easement rights will need to be retained for access to the utilities. The requested portion of the alley shows minimal public use, does not deny, does not deny reasonable access to the abutting property owners. Planning and zoning considered this item on their October 13, 2014 meeting, recommending by a vote of 7-0, that the city council approve the alley vacation request. So I'll open the public hearing at this time. Does anyone have any comments regarding the vacation of the alley at 1002 North Second Street? This portion of the alley contains century-linked utility infrastructure, and so easement rights will need to be retained for access to the utilities. The requested portion of the alley shows minimal public use, does not deny reasonable access to the abutting property owners. Planning and zoning considered this item on their October 13, 2014 meeting, recommending by a vote of 7-0 that the city council approve the alley vacation request. So I'll open the public hearing at this time. Does anyone have any comments regarding the vacation of the alley at 1002 North Second Street? Okay, I'll close the public hearing at this time. Do we have a motion from the council?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Just so I'm clear, they're only purchasing half of it, correct? Is that what I read? Because if I look at the picture, it is the sketch, it's crossed out the whole alley.
They would get the... They have first right to the half, and then if the other property owner on the other side doesn't wish to acquire it, then they have the opportunity to buy the whole thing.
But we don't end up only having an alley, do we?
It's happened before. Yeah.
Great rule. It's... Yeah, you can see it right here.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Jimenez?
No.
No?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetton?
Yes.
Versteg?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Callagery?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Next is to item E. This is to consider a resolution approving and adopting a revenue purpose statement for the use or expenditure of fee revenues from a proposed natural gas and electricity franchise fees. The consideration of approving an increase to the natural gas and electric franchise fees charged. State statute requires the city outline the use or expenditure of fee revenues in a document called a revenue purpose statement. The following are areas identified as allowable expenses to identify for the revenue statement, and the council can choose one or several or all. A is property tax relief. B is the repair, remediation, restoration, cleanup, replacement, and improvement of existing public improvements and other publicly owned properties, facilities, and buildings. C is projects designed to prevent or mitigate future disasters, as defined in Section 29C. Point 2. Item D is energy conservation measures for low-income homeowners, low-income energy assistance programs, weatherization programs. Item E is public safety, including the equipping of fire, police, emergency services, sanitation, street, and civil defense departments. We currently do that. Item F, the establishment, construction, reconstruction, repair, equipping, remodeling, and extension of public works, public utilities, and public transportation systems. We currently do that. Item G is the construction, reconstruction, or repair of streets, highways, bridges, sidewalks, pedestrian underpasses, and overpasses, street lighting fixtures, public grounds, and the acquisition of real estate needed for that. We do that. Number H is property tax abatements, building fee abatements, and abatement of other fees for property damage by a disaster. We don't do that. And the last is item I, economic development activities and projects. So presently, the city council, as I mentioned, uses F and G. The council recently added E and I as allowable uses for the franchise fee revenues. And so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Does anyone care to comment on the revenue purpose statement?
Was it H and I, or did you say E?
You said E and I. Did you mean H and I?
E, F, G, and I.
E.
E, F, G. G.
E, G, and I. Was that...
E, F, G, and I.
E, F, G, and I.
E, F, G, and I. All right, thank you.
Okay. Back to the hearing. Would anyone care to speak at this time? Okay, hearing done. I'll close the public hearing. Okay, do we have a motion regarding the public... The revenue purpose statement?
Some move.
Second.
All in favor, say... Oh, I'm sorry. Any discussion?
Yes. I'd like to amend my motion to pull the items that we are currently not doing. That's E, F, G, and the economic development, which will also be I. Is that correct?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
The items that we are currently not doing here, E, F, G, which I was asking about earlier.
We aren't doing.
Okay. So going back to what we are not doing was just I?
No. A, B, C, D, I. Or A, B, C, D, H are the ones that we're not doing.
Okay. I want to pull the ones that we were currently not doing. What did we change before from the first... We had a revenue purpose statement come through that we added stuff to that. I want to pull all of those items that we put on then and pull those out for this one.
So that, Mayor, Council, that would be excluding use E, which is public safety, including the equipping, fire, police, emergency service, sanitation, street, and civil defense departments, and I, which would be economic development activities and projects.
Okay, so it's just E and I, correct? Right? Okay.
And you would leave F and G.
That was the only two changes that we had from the orig... I don't have the original, but if that was the only two changes, then I'm fine with that.
So we had a motion and a second, and then we're trying to amend the motion already?
Right. So you want the motion to say that revenue purpose statement is just for F and G?
Yes. That's what you're saying. Right?
That's what you're saying, yes.
And let's see, Moore made the second, though.
I made the second, not to what he said. I made the second to his original.
For all four.
So do you want to amend your second to match?
No.
Okay. All right. Robert's rules. We have to go with the motion and the second that are on the table, correct? Okay. Any discussion?
Yeah, I want to talk about it a little bit, because we're going to talk about this as a whole, so some of this is going to run together group. Now, remember, this is the one that we talked about the first time around. This is a one-time vote for us, so this doesn't come up several other times. So one of the things that, you know, we kind of talked about is, why are we changing this to include economic development? Is it the Y? Is it dog parks? What is your economic development plan? If you're for raising the franchise fee and you're going to change the revenue purpose statement, what are you going to use that money for? If you're going to raise people's taxes, you should at least be able to tell them that you're going to spend the money somewhere else. And so to me, as we go forward and we look at the franchise fee, you're almost proposing two tax increases. One now with franchise fee and another one in 2017. Because if you go with this revenue purpose statement and you give the money away in 2014, 2015, 2016 to whatever economic development plan that you want, be it the Y, be it whatever it is, where does that money come from in 2017? You gave the money away somewhere else. So if you have something in mind, if you're for changing the revenue purpose statement, I'd like to know what it's for. Where do you think you're going to put that money in two, in 2017, when that rolls around, because several of you said it was for the backfill? Where are you going to get the money in 2017? The only place that you're going to be able to get it is in the tax limit. You've already maxed out the franchise fee.
So I'm not sure I'm tracking, Jason, your three-year window in there.
If you're changing the revenue purpose statement for economic development?
Correct.
Where do you want that money to go? You're going to... You're talking about raising the franchise fees coming up in the next two articles here. Okay? And that discussion's coming.
I'm providing for the flexibility for it to be used there if we as a council say fit.
Okay, so what do you have in mind for that?
Economic development, that's what it says.
Okay, so you're...
I don't know that I would sit here today and say I have a specific item. At the same token, I'm providing for that flexibility.
And so what happens in 2017? You have that flexibility. And let's just say you decide to do something with it. Because originally, you said it was for the backfill, right?
It certainly could have that flexibility to use for that.
Okay, so if it was for... Well, not if you give it away to economic development.
But that's why I'm not sure I'm understanding your three-year period, because at any point in time, we're going to budget every year how we're spending our revenues.
So now you're talking about making cuts at some point.
We need to evaluate that, yes, that's what we said.
Okay. So I think a smarter way to approach this is to make our cuts and see what we need for money, rather than saying, okay, let's raise your taxes, and let's add additional things that we can do with your money, without being able to tell the public where their money's going in the first place.
And I think there are two separate discussions. There's where you get your revenue, and then flexibility on how to use it. I'm looking at the flexibility of using the revenue with this revenue purpose statement. Then we can debate how we generate our revenue.
I'm not going to raise people's taxes and tell them that I can use it for something that I don't know about. I think if you're going to do this, and you're talking about doing this for the backfill, what we ought to be talking about is putting this in a separate pool and saying, hey, nobody touches this until 2017, assuming, you know, it is for the backfill, and that's what you want to use it for. Let's wait till 2017. Then, if we need it, it's sitting in the bank protected.
Yeah, but I think this revenue purpose statement is... This is where we're telling the public where the money can be used at.
Right.
And it's A through I.
That's right.
Okay.
We have new items in there.
Right.
Okay.
So those monies, this is where it only can be used at. One of these items, or two of these items, or three of these items. But you can't sit here today and say, okay, we're going to use it for economic development for this and that. Those discussions come later.
Yeah, and it gives us the flexibility.
You believe that you can use the franchise fee. Maybe this is more of a tax theory question, then.
Okay.
We can use the franchise fee for whatever economic development that we want to do. Is that what we're saying?
I think that's what the law says.
I understand that's what the law says, but that's not the way it was written before we changed it. We said that we were going to only use it for certain issues. We told the public... I wasn't a part of that vote. When I ran, I was opposed to this to begin with. But we told the public that we were only going to use it for certain things. Two years later, everything's changed now. And now, all of a sudden, we're throwing everything in there. And I think that's really...
Or just the...
Well, you're throwing in economic development. What does not clarify is economic development right now. I mean, almost anything does.
But it's something we have to agree on, and this gives us the flexibility to do it.
I think when you originally voted on it, you told the public one thing. Why didn't you add it inside then?
Because we didn't know about the property tax deal then.
But you're not doing it for the backfill. If you're doing it for the backfill, why aren't you trying to protect the money now?
We're doing it for everything that we think is best for the city, from my perspective. And we have several needs out there that we're not known. We haven't voted on those specific needs. We're trying to vote on whether we want the flexibility to address the needs of the city.
Yeah, exactly.
That's why I'm voting.
Okay, but those needs that have been driving this have been the Y. Some of those other issues that we have yet to talk about...
And we'll have budget sessions to do that.
If you're going to raise taxes, I think you have to tell people upfront. And again, if you're going to say...
This isn't voting to raise taxes, it's voting on where we spend it. Two different issues.
It is... Listen, you're going to be taking on franchise fees in the next two articles here.
That's exactly right.
Okay, we're raising taxes.
We can debate that.
Okay, that's raising taxes.
And we can debate that.
Okay.
This is where we're going to spend it.
I understand that, but we're changing... Like I said, this runs together. What are we going to raise the taxes? Just tell me what you're going to raise the taxes for.
Economic development, public safety.
Is that the Y? Is that the Y?
Well, you know what? We aren't deciding the Y now, as far as I know. We're talking about this issue.
Okay.
When we started discussing raising the franchise fee, it was for two things. And that's for the streets and sewer system. And all of a sudden, now, we've thrown all this other stuff in there, including economic development. I agree, Jason. It's for two things. That's what we should be using it for.
Why would this call for the vote?
Call question? Okay.
What's the vote on?
I just want to clarify. The revenue purpose statement including E, F, G, and I, correct?
That's correct.
E, say that again.
I'm sorry. E, F, G, and I.
Basically leaving it the way it was.
The way it originally was.
Okay. So this is reverting back, right? Is this leaving it the same way it's been?
Leaving it the way that we've been running, yes.
Yeah, it was the way it was before.
As it... Okay, so going back to before it was changed, correct?
No, no, no.
No.
As it is today.
As it is right now.
All four of them.
Okay, thank you.
That's what they're saying.
Staying the same. Roll call, please.
Moore?
Yes.
Van Zetton?
No.
Versteg?
No.
Walling?
No.
Yates?
Yes.
Callagery?
Yes.
Jimenez?
No.
Fails. Now, what do we got?
Can I make another motion on the same thing?
Well...
My preference would be that we have an adopted revenue purpose statement of some sort.
Well, how did this one come to fruition in the first place? That's... So if he wants to make... Let me ask you this, city attorney. Can he make a motion right now?
Obviously, it depends on what the motion is.
But is the floor open right now to make a motion? Can I make a motion off of... Can I go back to my original motion? We're pulling this, and we reverted back to where it was before, under these circumstances.
I'm satisfied that at this juncture, you could make a motion like that.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion to revert this back to the way it was before we changed. So that goes back to pulling those letters that I discussed earlier.
You've got to be more specific than that.
Okay. Pulling I?
Okay. What would it be? Rather than saying what we're pulling, how about if you say what it would be?
Okay, I want to pull economic development out of there.
What would it be?
F and G, Jason. F and G.
Yeah, F and G. I just said...
You want to leave A, B, C, and D out, don't you?
Yeah. He's just making a motion for F and G, I think, if I understand him right.
Well...
You just want F and G.
I want F. What was that?
Well, originally, E was... It was just the two.
Well, originally, E was, it was just the two, but are you opposed to E? E's are one of the new ones.
I would like to take this back to where it was originally.
And leave public safety out?
Again, I don't have the old one in front of me, so I'm asking specifically what items were in here that were added.
Okay. So what that does is remove economic development as a possible spending option.
That's correct.
And also removes public safety, which is the equipping of the fire, the police departments, emergency services, sanitation, street, and civil defense. Is that correct? You want that pulled out?
I'm okay with leaving E in, if you're okay with leaving E.
So E, F, and G is what you're leaving in.
Right, and we're pulling I.
And everything else is out?
Yeah.
Including A, B, C, and D. And H and I, they're all out.
I want to go back to the way it was before.
Okay, Mayor Council, the, when the fir, when the city adopted its revenue purpose statement the first time, it included F and G.
That's it, two things.
Just two things. As staff, we recommended what we have today, which is all four. However, the council voted for F and G. So basically, roads, infrastructure, sidewalks, that type of stuff. That's what we had. Then, the last time there was a modification to this revenue purpose statement, we, the council added public safety and added economic development. So there were four items. So that's how it progressed. So here we are today, reconsideration of the revenue purpose statement. And I believe Councilmember Van Zetten is saying he'd like it to go back to the original, which would be F and G.
I'm okay with leaving in E. Do you want to leave it in, or you want to pull it?
I'd say F and G, just stay with it.
Fine. F and G.
I'll second it.
Colin, did you want to say something?
Well, probably another motion here, if it doesn't, I, I'm, I support E. We debated it real heavy the very, very first time, and we kind of left it out. But because of the times, things have changed, I think E gives us some flexibility, but at least it's specific. More specific. It's not specific, but it's more specific than I.
I'll, I'd like to add E.
I'll second that.
So now, we're at E, F, and G.
E, F, and G.
Yep. Okay. And the opposition to economic development activities and projects, what is it?
Well, I think I've been very clear about it. We, I don't think we ought to be spending until we can tell people what we're doing with that money. Right now, we can't tell them what we're doing with that money. I don't think that franchise fee should be going to economic development to fund somebody's project until we know what it is. Right now, listen, the whole reason that we're even talking about franchise fees was it came, it came about with the why. And they wanted $200,000, and then we had Forest Cemetery.
They came first.
Right. But we haven't yet talked about how we should handle the tax theory behind that. I mean, should Forest Cemetery be separate than what the why is? I absolutely think it should. Do I think that we should have the flexibility to give the why $200,000 a year based off the franchise fee? I do not, no. That's my opposition to it.
It sounds like you're solely concerned with the economic development, as you're worried that we'll use that money for the why, is that correct?
You could use it for anything. You could put a bouncy house in the middle of town if you think it's a good idea.
Then, of course, that would come under some sort of scrutiny from the public and get a discussion in here.
And you know what? I've had plenty of scrutiny over what we have here, and plenty of scrutiny over the franchise fee as well.
Okay. Any further conversation? We're talking E, F, and G in support. Roll call, please.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
Yes.
Caliguri?
No.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Get him on to item F, another public hearing. We're on a roll here. Considering an ordinance amending the city's natural gas franchise agreement with Mid American Energy Company, increasing the existing natural gas franchise fees by an additional 2% of the company's gross revenue for all service classes. The current 25-year natural gas franchise agreement with Mid American Energy Company was approved and renewed by the city council in 2011, and at the time of renewal, a significant change was made to the franchise fee amount charged on the company's gross revenues. Change was an increase from 0.2% for all classes to 3% for all classes, except industrial, which was increased from 0.2% to 1.5%. The increase in revenues was specifically earmarked for infrastructure improvements as specified in the Iowa code. The increase in the franchise fee was completed as an alternative to issuing debt paid by property taxes for the needed infrastructure improvements, and this decision resulted in a lower tax burden for the average property owner in the city. At the December 15, 2014 city council meeting, the city council considered the third reading of an ordinance increasing the existing natural gas franchise fee by an additional 2% of the company's gross revenues for all service classes and expansion of the allowable uses for the revenue derived from the franchise fees collected. The third reading did not pass by a vote of 4-3, and since that time, one of the nay voters has reconsidered their vote and has asked that the matter be reconsidered. The 2% increase in fees is estimated to generate an additional $290,000 of revenue, bringing the annual revenue for gas and electric franchise fees to $685,000. The additional revenue would be used in a manner acceptable to city council through the currently approved revenue purpose statement or an amended version of that document just discussed. Initial discussions with the city council during study sessions indicates a desire to use the revenue to offset the impact associated with the recently approved property tax reform legislation by the legislature, which was SF 295, and pay for costs to provide public services, safety services within the community. The increase in fees can be accomplished through an amendment to the franchise agreements with Mid American Energy Company, and procedurally, the city council is required to hold a public hearing to accept comments from the public on the proposed franchise amendment. So now is the time for the public hearing to consider the ordinance in amending the franchise agreement. So yeah, for residential customers, it goes from 3% to 5%. Commercial, from 3% to 5%. Industrial, from 1.5% to 3.5%. Public authority customers, 5%, and transportation customers go from 3% to 5%. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak at this time?
Yes, hello, I'm Andrew Jensen, Masco Community Development Group Executive Director. As all of you know, when this franchise fee came up earlier this summer in August, we did, we supported the franchise fee at that point. And that was primarily, the discussion was about just recognizing the, kind of the revenue constraints that the city is considering, and the many big issues that all of you have been discussing already this evening. I guess, right now, my, my public comment is really just an update on where MCDG is. We, you know, we continue to work on understanding what that impact of the franchise fee is to our businesses in, in further analysis and discussions with the businesses that are, that are on the board, a lot of the bigger industries. It looks like it is very disproportionate to some of the bigger businesses in town. There's a lot of discussion and debate about whether we should reconsider our position. We have not had a chance to meet fully as a board to establish a new position on this, but I guess I just wanted to, to make you aware that those discussions have been happening. And some of our members have reconsidered their position based on further analysis of the, the impact of that franchise fee, particularly in the context of recent rate increases from Mid American Energy. So with that, I don't have a specific, anything more specific, but wanted to...
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
Do you consider that letter withdrawn right now?
I, I do not have board approval, one way or another.
But you have serious disposition now inside of your board since that...
I would say that there is no longer widespread support for it.
Okay, thanks.
That's what I'd say. Anything else?
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mark Willett, I'm the Assistant General Manager at Cloud Vow, and I'm gonna provide a few more details as to Andrew's concerns on the, on the franchise fee increase. Both of us are gonna speak just to the natural gas, but it applies to electrical, obviously, so that we don't have to keep getting up and down, and we can move on with business. As it says in the document, estimates are $290,000 increased revenue to the city. Through the calculations that we've done at Cloud, we will account for 70,000 of that, or 25%. So from a quality perspective, we obviously are requesting that we reevaluate that to look at something that is a little bit more equally spread across businesses as a whole. As Andrew also indicated, we have been impacted, what was supposed to be a positive impact when we started discussing with Mid American about a year ago on rate changes, we were supposed to have a positive impact there, but as we've gotten closer, it looks like we're gonna have a negative impact from that, that is in the neighborhood of 200 to 500,000 a year. So couple that with this increase, and the support from Cloud Vow is waning quickly and is completely gone now. So the purpose of, of me standing up here is, we, we understand that there are needs for the city, and we would support those needs, but we just request that we take a, take a step back, reevaluate what our options are, and look at something that can be equally divided amongst business or, or the public.
Okay. Ask a question, please.
Sure.
Have you evaluated what you think would be a fair share from Cloud Vow?
We haven't. I don't know that that's necessarily our choice.
And the reason I ask is when we went through this the very first time, I was, I was, had the luxury of having discussions with Cloud, and there was numbers presented at that time, and so I just didn't know if you'd done it this time as well.
We haven't put any together that I'm aware of. I've only been there three months now, so I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't available when the first time this went around that I, that I'm aware of, or at least engaged to this, this level. So I, I will tell you that the similar things have been done at cities around Iowa, and some of the changes they've made is anything, any power that's tax exempt does not fall into this. Now, that would help us. I don't know exactly what those numbers are. Rick, have you done any math on that at all?
I think it'd be roughly 70% of the use.
Okay, so... I mean, that would help us out. Obviously, it's gonna reduce the overall revenue that's gonna be generated from this, but certainly something that we, we would consider looking at and ask you, you to consider looking at, some of the other cities. I know Rick has been in contact with one, maybe two.
For sure.
Right. That we can provide you with the feedback and the information they have, and have you consider that from a tax perspective.
What city was that?
Dubuque.
Dubuque, thank you.
Quick question for you, maybe you know, maybe you don't. McWayne Industries, how many franchise fees do you guys incur in other states?
I have no idea.
No idea that number?
No.
So would it be fair to say for you guys to do business in Oskaloosa, it was gonna be costing you more than probably some other states?
I would say that's true, yes.
So if you want to do business here, you're gonna be paying more?
I would say that's, that's an accurate statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the same name I had when I was here before. Joke for come. Here with Masco and member of the MCDG board. Anytime a tax is to be levied, I think it's incumbent upon those that are voting on it, proposing it, that the consequences, the impact of it, need to be reviewed and looked at. A tax that, that proposes to collect 75%, or 25% of its revenues, $75,000, from one taxpayer, doesn't seem to me to be something that is really fair. That's not a public tax. Obviously, those who have larger businesses and so forth are gonna pay more than an individual resident says, and that's, that can be fair. But when we first were asked to support this as a group, the MCDG, there was a presumption on my part, in fact, I was asked about this the other day by somebody in Smoky Row, asking what, what's this all about? And I, in general, described the concept that it's a tax, that, a little bit like sales tax, everybody gets to contribute a little bit to it, and it's, it makes things work fairly. If we look at something like this, any business that we would try to recruit into the community that has a heavy energy usage, we'd look at Oskaloosa and say, nope, don't want to go there. They lean heavily on anybody who's a heavy energy user. So I don't think there's, and I think they were saying the same thing, not opposed to the city collecting the revenues to support the kinds of things we need to, need to support in our community, but I would certainly encourage you to step back and look at it and say, how do we, how do we balance this out so that there's more fairness and more equitable distribution across the board? 25% from one taxpayer, just, I don't think if anybody sat down and looked at that when they began the thing, anybody would say that that was fair. And where we are now, it doesn't get any fairer. So I would encourage backing up and looking at this and determining how it can be applied more equitably than moving forward. I think, I think you'll find support from business for it, as long as it, there's an equitable distribution.
Did anybody come to your group that didn't support? I haven't supported this all the way through. And I have to be honest with you, I was shocked when I saw that letter come out of MCDG. I was shocked. I never talked to your group. I know there's other people that didn't talk to your group. What concerns me is we didn't have an open line of communication about that. That really bothers me, that you didn't have a line of what my position was. So somehow, you, you guys got selective information, and that bothers me. That bothers me that, I wish I could have presented my case to you then, too.
Okay. Yeah, I, let me just comment to that. My reaction to it is, there's a need for some specific additional revenue to do something, and something that collects from people, and like a sales tax does, people who buy more are gonna end up paying more of the bill in terms of doing that. I didn't, nothing inherently told me that this thing was going to load heavily on one person or another, but before something like this put together, somebody, you need to go through that. I voted for it simply because I thought, okay, we need some additional revenue, I'm okay with that, and just assumed that somebody looked at the balance and fairness of it. And that's, that's the part that's bothering me now.
Question for the, the concept of taxing only the non-exempt power is interesting to me. Do you know if Masco has the same sort of vision with their operations that I know where I work, for example, that's something we do, that the, the power that goes into production is considered exempt from taxation, but then the power that goes into routine office operations does get taxed? Do you have that sort of thing going on with the Masco operations?
I don't know that we do, but we don't, we're not a heavy power user for anything other than just offices and things of that sort. So we would, here in Oskaloosa, we would not have a substantially exempt status that goes on. There's a guy sitting fairly close to you that'd know a lot more about that, but I would, her theory is, he should know more about that, was how he does.
Let's just move on, Dan. I need a check, so let's keep going.
No, I, the, the issue gets to be, when things, when tax is gonna be looked at, I think, I think somebody needs to play the game all the way out and make sure they've thought through, okay, what's this gonna all add up to, and is the net collection gonna be fair when you, when you get done with it? And I'm just, I'm surprised and disappointed to find that there's this kind of a disproportionate status in that. And so I'm supportive of finding a source of revenues to deal with these needs that are, that are needed, but I'm not supportive of doing it without making a fairness test of the, of the net collection process that goes into it.
And one last question, because it came back to that revenue purpose statement. Before we raise anybody's taxes on anything, don't you think it would be smart for us to come to you and say, here's the plan? This is what we want to raise your taxes for, whether it be an economic development project, whether it be a complete streets project? If we're going to do that, because I, I know what's gonna come up next, we're all gonna run out of here, and they're gonna try to figure out how we can tax them less, and this is coming right back. It's gonna be back here in probably two weeks. So do you find it smart for us to come up and say at least what we're gonna spend our franchise fee on before we go do that?
All the information that could be made available is, is helpful. My one reservation with that sort of thing is that circumstances change enough, and when a fee is in place, more generalized purpose of it is okay with me, because one event may find a newer solution to it, but there's all, there's needs in that same general category. So I agree a little bit. I agree in part with what you're saying, that the purpose ought to be stated, but I really would caution getting hands tied so that it's got such restrictions on it that you can't deal with the practical realities of the way life changes from day to day and month to month with that. Is that a, kind of a political answer that doesn't give you anything?
That's a good job, it's perfect.
It, it comes from watching all these ads on TV lately, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who would care to speak? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and I will leave the floor open for a motion.
Make a motion to deny? Second.
Discussion.
I guess the only thing I would, I would further add commentary to Mr. Willett, I believe, was, Rick, thank you. When we did go through this the first time, just the type of analysis was done, that's, that's how we ended up with different percentages for industrial. So specifically, Cloud and Oskaloosa Food sat down with us as counsel before we, before we did that, and we worked through the numbers to make it fair and equitable. As we went through this the last eight to 10 or 12 weeks, I apologize that I didn't come to you and ask you for those numbers, but shame on me for, you know, just assuming that that, that had been considered, I guess, when it came through the MCDG and that, that it was originally supported. So I guess I just wanted to point out for the, for the general public that we tried to do that last time to make it a fair and equitable tax. It certainly was not the intent to put it on the back of one particular user like yourself, and, and we certainly could look at that in a different way, and should, so I appreciate you presenting that tonight.
Any other thoughts or comments? Okay, the motion is to flat out deny. Roll call, please.
First Day?
Yes.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
No.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
Okay. I just lost count.
Five, two.
Five, two. Okay. So that passes, right? Okay. Okay. Next item is G, public hearing regarding amending the city's electric franchise agreement, increasing existing electric franchise fees by 2%. So, and same thing as what we were doing with natural gas. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Does anyone care to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to deny? Second.
Okay, any discussion? Roll call.
Walling?
Yes.
Yates?
No.
Caliguri?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
No.
Van Zetten?
Yes.
First Day?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item H, consider an ordinance amending Oskaloosa City Code Section 10.48 pertaining to the requirement of posting of signs prohibiting parking during a snow emergency. requirement of posting of signs prohibiting parking during a snow emergency. Section 10.48.320 of the Oskaloosa Municipal Code says it's the duty of the police chief or city engineer to erect or cause to be erected appropriate signs, giving notice when any parking time limit is imposed or parking is prohibited on sides, on streets or portions of the streets. Section 10.48.360 prohibits any person to obstruct the orderly removal of snow from the city streets by parking or otherwise leaving unattended any vehicle upon any street or portion of the street when signs are posted on primary or secondary roads or at near their points of intersection with the corporate boundaries prohibiting on-street parking during a snow emergency. During the recent branding presentation, Roger Brooks had mentioned he noticed the drug ordinances enforced in snow emergency signs as he entered the city, and how the signs may detract from our city, maybe sending the wrong message to visitors. But beyond that, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance modifying the language in Section 10.48, deleting the requirement of the posting of signs prohibiting parking on city streets when a snow emergency is declared, and that the second and third readings of the ordinance be waived. My understanding of this is that this refers specifically to the sign that is on the east side of town, is that correct?
There's a couple of them.
A couple of them? But these are the ones that as you enter the town?
Yeah, they're up on the screen here for me.
Okay. Okay. So anyway, do we have a motion supporting that?
Remove.
Okay.
Are we removing the snow part, or the drug part, or both?
Sorry.
No.
Well, the first time I read it, I thought we were getting rid of both, but the second time I read it, it looked like we were just getting rid of the snow, and we're leaving the drug.
Removing the section that says that you have to have the sign posted at the entrance ways, because that's presently what our code says.
The code says we have to.
Yeah.
So if we change the code, does that mean you have to take them down? It just doesn't?
It's just the option, I would say.
That's correct.
Flexibility.
Did we vote on what was actually going to be put on that sign in the first place?
Somebody did.
Somebody, did it ever come up?
Well, in previous councils, we have discussed things like, you know, the engine brake ordinance, that sort of thing, having to do with what can we do to buy it down and just make it a little bit easier to live in town.
To answer Jason's question, too, if I could, my understanding from talking with Jake is, as I understand, the drug enforcement ordinance or sign was required previously as part of a grant we got in the past, is that correct?
I couldn't find a definitive answer for that, but I am guessing that...
When the DARE program started in this community back in the late 80s, that was required to get the grant, and it's been there ever since the late 80s, and we have not received a DARE grant in 15 years or better.
How can the sign be sending the wrong message?
It's just a hostile sort of thing, you know, coming into town, and it helped to be there.
I'll be honest with you, it makes it sound like we have a huge drug problem.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not surprised to hear that this was ultimately facilitated out of the DARE program.
Yeah.
I mean, that doesn't surprise me in the slightest, so. I don't see where it sends the wrong message myself.
I don't either.
It's not particularly...
It just says we enforce our laws.
Which you could probably guess that without the sign, too.
That just shows how immune you get to things. I've lived here so many years, I don't even notice that.
Yeah.
Trying to buy it. But a newcomer to town, or someone who makes their living during this, came in and evaluated our community, and that was one of the things they thought made us look less attractive. So I'm really interested in that.
Well, I go to other towns, and I don't read their signs anyway, so.
He probably makes assumptions about their law enforcement as well.
Assuming that's going to happen.
Yeah.
Based on your marijuana stance, you might want to keep those up.
Is this just to take the sign down, or?
Yeah, take it down.
Take it down.
Is there any interest in waiving the second and third reading?
Sure. Why do we need to?
Yeah, why don't we leave it in and get to hear what the public thinks about it? We usually don't waive second reading.
It's not that big of an emergency, I don't think. Was there a reason to do it?
I actually didn't think it was going to be a debatable issue. And honestly, I'd like to get it done before it gets too cold, but it's fine.
Maybe Jake will be lucky enough, somebody will just run into it. What do you think, Jake?
So I'm not hearing interest in waiving...
You want to waive it?
Yeah, I want to waive it.
I'll second.
Okay.
You just want to deal with it and have it done.
Yeah.
That's all it matters.
Yeah. I could see a certain amount of expediency to get it done before...
I'm going to say this, because I say it every time. We keep waiving it for ourselves, the government, but we don't want to waive it for the public, and I think that's sending a wrong message.
Okay.
And I understand, I'd like to take it down, too. As far as I'm concerned, that sign's just like the sign that says, for sale by owner. Well, I hope to hell you own it if you're selling it. So, you know, it's like, we don't really need all this data, but...
But you think we should leave it in case the public wants that?
I'm not saying leave it, I'm saying don't waive the three, you can't waive the three readings, because...
That's why I'm not...
We don't do it for the public when they come. But we always want to do it for ourselves, as the government, I would say.
Any comments?
Well, what are we voting on?
This is, the first one is the vote on waiving the rules. Okay, the second and third reading. Roll call, please.
Gates?
No.
Callagury?
Yes.
Jimenez?
No.
Moore?
No.
Benzetton?
Yes.
First day?
No.
Walling?
Well, no.
Okay, so that fails, and so on with the original motion, having to do with deleting the requirement for the posting of the signs.
Take this sign down.
Roll call, please.
Callagury?
Yes.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Benzetton?
Yes.
First day?
No.
Walling?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, first reading. Okay, moving on, getting towards the end here. Report from city staff, city manager, report on downtown two-hour parking survey.
Yeah, Mayor and council, you might recall, a few months ago, we presented to you the idea that we might try to address downtown parking. We were going to do a survey with Main Street, and then that came back, it was kind of split. Then we had the Roger Brooks Community Assessment done. We said, okay, well, let's resurvey the group and see what the results are. You can see they're provided for you in your packet, but I think what it shows is that it's an equally divisive issue. So from the respondents that cared to participate, it was essentially split 50-50 between regulated versus unregulated. So I don't know that we necessarily have any clear consensus on that, but in the presentation by Mr. Brooks, he did talk about two-hour parking being a killer for retail, and it should be something that's longer than two hours or unregulated. So just something that hasn't gone away, I suspect we need to do something about it. If anybody has any interest in doing something about it, let me know. So that's my report on that. Next item is an update on the Grant Neighborhood Park. Approximately a year ago, we went through a process where we reached out to the residents of the Grant Neighborhood to talk about what they'd like to see as far as improvements done to that park, which is underutilized as a public facility. Some of you participated in that process and appreciated that. From that, we ended up receiving a presentation from the landscape architect, which was quite expensive.
Yeah.
And then a modified version of it, which was quite expensive. And so you, as a group, said, no, thanks, don't do that, the park's fine, although I would encourage you to visit the park if you haven't, because I don't necessarily think it's fine. So we, as staff, said, okay, let's see if we can seek alternative funding sources to try to make some minor improvements, work with the community, and still get some things done that they had originally intended to get done. One of the funding sources that we sought out was the McQuiston Trust, and we've had success with that particular funding source. It paid for the carpet and some of the technology improvements here to the council chambers. And the trustees, again, decided to fund our request to make some improvements to Grant Park. The submittal was included in your packet, but the primary focus of this, of the proposed improvements, would be to enhance accessibility to the facility through sidewalk installation along Sea Avenue East, and to provide a monument sign and some aesthetic improvements like fencing, a little more decorative fencing. The idea is we're trying to improve access, improve safety, and make it a much more welcoming community facility. We received the grant of $24,100. We believe that will be essential to getting a number of these projects done for us, and we see it as a first phase. We haven't met with the, we haven't called a meeting again of the residents, and we plan to do that here in the near future, just to share with them this initial concept and see if we can start chipping away at other things to improve through various funding sources other than the typical local option sales tax or property taxes.
The question, we haven't gotten it yet, is that?
Nope. The good news is we received it.
You did get it? Twenty, the whole 24...
$24,100.
Okay, thank you.
And how much of that will it take care of?
Sidewalks, the fence, and the monuments.
Did we ever do the repairs on the playground equipment and then bring the other equipment that was in storage at Klaau out? That's been a year or so.
The equipment's still in storage, we haven't done anything, because we, the idea was to try to figure out what the plan was.
Is any of that in?
We haven't incorporated any of it. So this is just, we were trying to figure out how to, because there wasn't much support from council to make the improvements because of other priorities, we were just trying to figure out where can we make some minor improvements to show some goodwill to the residents who participated, and they seemed to receive support from council and attended, and it changed. So we're trying to make some minor improvements that maybe would satisfy them a little bit.
I would think, since the grant, we can't, the grant can only be spent for this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we might want to look about getting that other equipment involved, but I'm not sure what that part of that takes.
Yeah, there's some, there are some concepts that we've put together as alternates, but we want to share that with the residents and see what they say. We don't want to just dictate the improvements to them. We'd like to get their feedback on it.
So are we proposing $25,000 of improvements to them on this plan? Is that what I see up on screen?
Good news, it came from a grant, so that's happened.
That's right.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. City clerk, anything?
No, sir.
City attorney, anything?
Nothing.
Yeah, thank you. Moving through, then, reports from city council members. How about we start with you, Joe?
No, nothing.
Mayor?
No, thank you.
No, sure.
I guess just to comment back on the earlier votes, I want to make sure it's clear that by my voting no on the deny of the franchise fee was not, that I didn't hear what Klaau Val was presenting, certainly would like to reconsider different amounts, I just don't, my no vote was I don't want to give up on the complete entirety of the franchise fee at some point going forward.
Well, I didn't think my yes vote meant that, did it? I mean, we voted that down, but I'm assuming...
I didn't know what it meant. That's why I wanted to explain it, I don't know sure what I voted for.
I was going to bring, you know, because even Klaau said they're willing to look at something. So it all needs to be revisited.
Yeah. Here you, more equitable someplace.
Tom, anything?
I was it.
Okay, Jason?
You know, just playing off what you guys said, I think this is a big factor on all of our parts, straight across the board, of us trying to communicate with the businesses and back and forth, so. I think we need to listen a lot more to what we're doing. That's all I got.
Thought we did listen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's the bigger point.
That's the point, we didn't hear.
We didn't hear from that.
Well, we heard from MCDG that represents the business.
And so now we're going to run back and try to figure out how to do this and bring this back again in a different form.
I hope, maybe.
Okay, I've got nothing else to contribute, so do we have a motion to adjourn?
Remove.
All the papers say aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
And see if we can start chipping away at other things to improve through various funding sources other than the typical local option sales tax or property taxes.
The question, we haven't gotten it yet, is that?
Nope. The good news is we received it.
You did get it? Twenty, the whole 24...
$24,100.
Okay, thank you.
And how much of that will it take care of?
Sidewalks, the fence, and the monuments.
Did we ever do the repairs on the playground equipment and then bring the other equipment that was in storage at Klaau out? That's been a year or so.
The equipment's still in storage, we haven't done anything, because we, the idea was to try to figure out what the plan was.
Is any of that in?
We haven't incorporated any of it. So this is just, we were trying to figure out how to, because there wasn't much support from council to make the improvements because of other priorities, we were just trying to figure out where can we make some minor improvements to show some goodwill to the residents who participated, and they seemed to receive support from council and attended, and it changed. So we're trying to make some minor improvements that maybe would satisfy them a little bit.
I would think, since the grant, we can't, the grant can only be spent for this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we might want to look about getting that other equipment involved, but I'm not sure what that part of that takes.
Yeah, there's some, there are some concepts that we've put together as alternates, but we want to share that with the residents and see what they say. We don't want to just dictate the improvements to them. We'd like to get their feedback on it.
So are we proposing $25,000 of improvements to them on this plan? Is that what I see up on screen?
Because... Good news, it came from a grant, so that's happened.
That's right.
Right.
Run.
Thank you, Mike. City clerk, anything?
No, sir.
City attorney, anything?
Nothing.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Moving through, then, reports from city council members. How about we start with you, Joe?
No, nothing.
Mayor?
No, thank you.
No, sure.
Done?
I guess just to comment back on the earlier votes, I want to make sure it's clear that by my voting no on the deny of the franchise fee was not, that I didn't hear what Klaau Val was presenting, certainly would like to reconsider different amounts, I just don't, my no vote was I don't want to give up on the complete entirety of the franchise fee at some point going forward.
Well, I didn't think my yes vote meant that, did it? I mean, we voted that down, but I'm assuming...
I didn't know what it meant. That's why I wanted to explain it, I don't know sure what I voted for.